Good evening, it's June 11th. And we're opening the June 11th Regular Board of Directors Meeting. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Student Board Representative Sullivan Taylor has our land acknowledgement.
Are we good? Yep, okay. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan Peoples and the Cowlets Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all of the indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you Sullivan. The next item is to adopt the agenda for the evening.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a special recognition of our District Art Show winners. John? I think we have staff coming up. Corinne? Hi Corinne.
Alright, she says I can speak now. We have some art to share with you tonight. Some of you I know were able to make it to the District Art Show that was held over at the Cascade Park Library. And we're so thankful to them that they allow us to put our show there and share that with the public for two weeks. And thank you to everyone that was able to come out. But we want to present our special award winners to you tonight. And we have most of the artists here as well, so they will actually be the ones to present their art. So the first two are special awards that are named in honor of past district staff. The first one is the Mary Kamek Award. And this was named after a staff member who was particularly passionate about music and art. And this was named in her honor for art education. And it is by Julie Nagel. And Julie's from Mountain View High School, is a 12th grader, unable to be here tonight. But Julie's mom, Ann, has a few words about the creation of this art.
Thank you. So Julie wrote this, so I'm just gonna read what she wrote to me. My art was created by using a multitude of materials, including chalk, magazine paper, black and white charcoal, Sharpie markers, tape, and fine tip markers. This began as an assignment in my painting and drawing class with Ms. Butterfield. The project had to relate to springtime, and I had to fracture the picture using some kind of collage, create implied texture, use charcoal for parts of the artwork, and at least three colors that complement the artwork. With these instructions and a little creative integrity, I chose a kitten for this theme of springtime because spring reminds me of kittens and baby animals. But to fracture it, I had to, it created a glitching effect by layering squares of chalk overlapping the cat and taped layers of yellow see-through paper over the top. Then I added headphones and the turntable because the glitching reminded me of early 2000s club and cyberpunk aesthetic. I chose the orange, the colors orange, yellow, and red because they contrasted my blue paper background the best, especially the orange parts of the cat because it's, because it is blues complementary color. That's true. Overall, I wanted this drawing to be eye-catching, fun, abstract, and meet all my, the criteria for my assignment.
Our second piece is the, oh, we could, sure. Our second award winner is the Sharon Springer Award. And this award is, Sharon was the, one of the original creators of the Art Discovery Program, which is our art curriculum in the elementary schools. And so this piece again exemplifies the spirit of art education in elementary music. And from Emerald Elementary and kindergarten, this is Emily Tvetuhina and her piece, The Arctic Fox.
You did a, you did a really, really good job.
The rest of our awards are the superintendent winners, and these were chosen by professional artists that served as our judges. And so these ones are, will be displayed in the hallway as soon as we get them framed just outside the boardroom here. So the first one is our Superintendent Award for Photography. And this is Tamara Trembley from Heritage High School. And Tamara just graduated this year.
Awesome. How many pictures did you have to take to get?
That's a good picture. Our next piece is the 3D Ceramic Winner. And Valeria's unable to be here tonight, but this is Valeria from Evergreen High School. And Valeria's in 10th grade. And we have the teapot. Our next award, he also is unable to be here, David Cortez from Heritage High School. And he's in 10th grade. And this is a lino print. And I, we think that this is, we have over 100 pieces of art in our collection, but we think this is the very first print that has won the Superintendent Award. So it's exciting to be able to add this to our district collection. So this is David Cortez Untitled Lino Print.
What do you mean by print?
Karen can explain that. Our middle school, okay. Thank you Jackie, I'm just speeding. Our middle school Superintendent Award winner is Sophia Andruschko. Sophia's from Shehala Middle School and is an 8th grader. And this is a portrait that she's called Pensive. One more note about Sophia is another one of her pieces was chosen to be on the cover of our invitation this year. And that was chosen by our art teachers, the district art teachers, so, so it's exciting. Our next winner, we've got two more, we have two elementary winners. So this is chosen from 3rd through 5th grade. And this is from Nora Millard from Ellsworth Elementary. And Nora is in 5th grade. And her piece is entitled Titanic. And in 2nd grade from Crestline Elementary, Elementary is Olivia Sodomire. And her painting is called The Purple Flower. Alright, thank you for taking the time to meet our artists and enjoy the art for the rest of the evening. Thanks.
Thank you Corinne.
Thanks for coming on. All set? Thank you, all the best. So the next item on our agenda, the next item on our agenda is community members who wish to speak to the Board. Any community member wishing to speak to the Board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the Board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the Board will not engage in dialogue, the Board Chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes, and there is no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per regular meeting even if there is time remaining. And finally, please state your name and district affiliation if any. I believe we have three online speakers. Is Angie Bundah ready to give her comments? Angie?
Aloha, can you guys see me?
We can hear you, we see your name.
Um, let me see. Oh. There we go, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Hello. Coming to you from Oahu. Uh, I'm gonna do this with two phones, so bear with me. I have a couple questions that I wanted to ask and hopefully start some new conversations. So the first one is about all of these appointments that have been happening recently. Is Evergreen's tendency to appoint administrative positions still the best solution? It's been said many times that the highest-paid executive directors and directors in the ASE are paid so much to stay competitive and attractive for the best candidates to apply. However, Evergreen has a vicious cycle of administrative appointments instead of opening jobs up for any internal, let alone external applicants. So at what point do we see the same patterns emerge with continuous years of budget cuts and still allow for the same administrators making these decisions to move up? And at what point do appointments become more about blind loyalty, looking the other way, and ingratiating yourself to the person in charge of hiring rather than being based on qualifications, merit, and achievement? A recent job posting for transportation supervisor now actually includes the essential function of, demonstrates loyalty to the district and fellow administrators. What about loyalty to our students to proactively find the best person for the job to support them? Are we giving all of our best and brightest staff here the chance to show they can earn administrative promotions based on their capabilities? Pardon me. And are we showing potential outside candidates that their hard work and accomplishments will be noticed and that there are equal opportunities to get promoted ethically? My second question is about questions themselves. When did asking questions and seeking better solutions become negative? When did finding buried scandals, unlawful policy changes, and misuses of power become a tax on the same people committing these things that take away from our students and our schools? Other school districts have community resources set up in place so that stakeholders can directly interact with their Board and Admins. PPS actually has a program called PACE that Dr. Armstrong created. And yet in our district, we don't do that. And those who are brave enough to use their voices to advocate are labeled as negative, attacking, and have actually been warned by the district to stop digging or asking questions. I've found the only people who do not want the community to ask questions are those who are afraid of the answers that will be found. At the same time, we don't have any information or communication. We're told to trust the process, and we don't have any real answers or accountability when power is abused or discrepancies are discovered. The best resource that this district has is its parents and community. And with cooperation and integrity, together we can bring more volunteers to classrooms, find ways to raise money to help programs and students, and spread awareness to both the great things Evergreen has to offer in order to grow our enrollment and to proactively work together to find solutions for the struggles in our classrooms. So what do we have to do to get communication with the district? What do the teachers have to do to be able to get heard and to have emails answered when we write them and to have ways to interact?
Unfortunately, your time has expired.
Thank you very much. Aloha.
Aloha. And thank you for your comments. The next person to speak is Lisa Karstetter, online. Can you hear us Lisa?
Hey John. It's your favorite co-conspirator. I don't know if you can hear me, but he's looking down, I think so. I just wanted to wish you a happy, happy retirement. This is your time to relax, recharge, go spend some time with Annie and your family and not worry about all of us and all the kids that I know you worry about all the time. I just wanna tell everyone there and John that he left such a legacy in Quincy. And the time, the heart, the commitment that you put into things, John, is amazing. And your footprint and your handprints and your heart are left all over our town. And they always will be, and will never be forgotten. Thanks for being such a brilliant thought leader and a partner. I miss our lunches where we would dream of what we could have in Quincy and what we could do if we collaborated and we partnered and we did it. And we have a beautiful school, and we have amazing staff, and a fantastic superintendent that you groomed and beautifully left for us when you left. And, and we have a hospital that's being built now. And I know that you and I talked long and hard about that and how we could get that going. So, um, I just, you're missed. And I, and I know that if you get bored in retirement, you'll be welcome back here with open arms, not as a superintendent because we've got a good one, but as a thought partner for me and the rest of us here. And just come visit, we miss you. So enjoy your retirement.
Thank you my friend, love you.
I love you too.
Thank you for your comments Lisa. The next person to speak is Sue Kane. Sue, are you here?
Hello. Hi, I'm Sue Kane, and I came as well to offer gratitude and a salute to a man whose name has become synonymous with education excellence in Quincy, Washington, Superintendent John Boyd. John, as you embark on a well-deserved journey of retirement, I just want to take a moment to celebrate all that you've left in our community. Your leadership was not just a brilliant guiding light that pointed us towards a brighter future for our kids. You were such a catalyst in our early STEM education work and our dual-credit and pathway work, our community partnership development, and so many other programs and initiatives and improvements and innovations. You really helped build the foundation of opportunity, and it's still reaching hundreds of young minds across the region. And your legacy is not just in those programs, but also in all the lives that you touched. You just have a way of seeing beyond titles and accolades and recognize the inherent value in every single person. And your ability to build our entire community is seen in the success of our schools. It's been nothing short of transformative. I just really miss seeing your quick smile and your genuine warmth and the way that you created an environment where everybody felt valued and heard and were courageous enough to share our dreams about what schools could be and what we could do with community. And you invested deeply in the development of your colleagues and left us with a really incredible superintendent. And we want to make sure that you know that that legacy in our district is strong and thriving. And educators like you, you never really leave the system. You live on and everything that you imparted in the ways that you empowered others to carry it forward. On a personal note, I also want to thank you for the impact that you've made on me and my colleagues. And as you step into this next adventure, I hope it brings you as much joy and fulfillment as you've brought to so many of us. May it fill your cup with new experiences, just as you've filled ours with knowledge, compassion, and courage to drink, dream big. Thank you so much, John Boyd.
Thank you Sue. Thank you Sue. The next person to speak is Alex Ibarra, who's a representative in the State House of Representatives. And a former school director in Quincy. Alex, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, just want to say hello to John. He and I had many adventures together when he moved over to Quincy. I remember the, the day we hired him in Quincy, he came in and my thoughts about hiring John as our superintendent was, one, he could speak Spanish and we had 86% of the kids could, knew Spanish, so that was great. Talked to the parents, the kids. And he was also one of those guys where if Bill Gates came to town, he'd take you golf with him and get a million dollars for the Quincy School District. That was my, my hiring thoughts, not, not many, but it seems kinda funny to come to think about it, but what John was able to accomplish, he transformed Quincy. He made it one of the best school districts in the state. We built one of the best high schools in the state, all because of John and his leadership and his, sometimes we argued about some things here and there, but it was always just what was best for kids. We had a great relationship and we still do. As you know, or you might not know, my name's Alex Ibarra, and I'm the state representative for District 13, Central Washington. I was a school board member in Quincy for nine years. And to this day, probably not a month ago or two months ago, I called John and said, "John, I've got a new bill coming through this system, what are your thoughts?" And I've been doing that since the, you know, since John was superintendent in Quincy and in Evergreen. And, you know, maybe I won't call him as much anymore, but I do plan to call him to have a barbecue and have a beer one of these days. Because I miss him and that you guys come and visit Quincy because you transformed our town, John. I hope you know that.
Thank you Alex. Thank you for your comments Alex. The next person to speak is Kari Leibert. Kari, are you here? Welcome. She's gotta switch the mic.
Are we good? Alright. Good evening, my name is Kari Leibert, and I am one of the elementary music specialists here in our district. I am here tonight to share an update on what the subbing crisis actually looks like in our schools. Back in the fall, it was requested to hear from the school board what was actually happening in our schools to make better informed decisions for the district. Members from the librarians, the music teachers, and the PE teachers all came together and signed up to share out what was happening in our programs in regards to classroom coverage. We began self-reporting our missed class times in elementary and had members come to you and report. It was scripted, I think you might remember it. This got the attention of you, and questions were asked. And we, as a small team, were able to meet with Bobby Height. And we successfully met with her three times this school year. And while the meetings didn't make significant change, we got principals to know the contract of our CBA and know what is required and what's happening. This brings me to tonight. Our data is not good. We are now at full days of missed music, PE, and library across almost every single school. 103 times through the rotation, including music teachers, PE teachers, coaches, and librarians, that's four staff members, 103 times for total, between our 22 elementary schools. That means over 400 missed days of teaching and working the jobs we are contracted to do. That is at least 200 days our students in EPS have missed their guaranteed right to music education and PE. EPS has a problem. We need more subs. EEA negotiated student support positions in the hope that they would be covering the substitute needs of buildings. Clearly, many schools have not received the support. Seven elementary schools have gone through the coverage for unfilled positions at least seven times. Only one school has yet to have a need for pulling specialists. I bring this all up to share that next year, it will only be worse with the chosen decision that has been made to cut librarians. We will no longer have them to pull for the covering of our classrooms. We will only have three teachers in a building available to cover. We have interventionists who will now be required to have subs, pulling again on the need for more coverage. While the intricacies of the unfilled sub jobs is complicated, the school board has the power to make changes. Our Title I and North End schools are the ones who are most greatly impacted. It's time to look at creative forms of compensation and support to our subs who do come into the buildings, and encourage subs to take jobs at our harder schools. You, the school board, can take action and opt to take a day or even half a day to sub in the schools on days and weeks when we know it is going to be difficult. Staff here in this building can come and support our classrooms so that students can get their guaranteed and viable curriculum in music and in PE. We need something better, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Sasha Hawthorne.
Hello, my name is Sasha Hawthorne, and I am a teacher at Y East Middle School. I have some comments today, just sort of regarding the state of the union of our schools from someone who is in a school every single day. My comments today are gonna come in the form of a poem. And I've been advised that poems have titles. So the title of this poem is, "The Situation Is Dire and I Hope We Keep That In Mind Unless It Becomes The New Normal." I'm a teacher. Of course, I'm in it for the outcome, but I'm a person who needs an income too. So I've made it my job to tend to our youth. I balance my passions with their needs and your metrics, and I stand on what feels like the edge of a precipice of a zero-sum equation. Teaching's my profession, it's the work that I do. So hear me profess that I don't have the tools. There aren't enough people or headphones or paper, I can't protect children with only my labor. My heart's really big and I love what I do, but drives an ingredient, not a full substitute for financial investment in the future of our schools. schools. We test them, give surveys, set growth goals and percentages, measure performance in all of the areas, but let me tell you that these numbers just don't matter. When our students live in shelters and their parents don't have healthcare, and their teachers drive for Uber, and their parents are on welfare despite working full-time jobs with our children in their care. We buy bonds and we buy bullets, and the GDP is trillions while your school district is starving. No more luxuries like reading. Yes, it's sad. Your hands are tied. The budget's tight. We shrug inside. There's so much more these kids are needing. What's your plan to staunch the bleeding? There are men living in Washington with billions to their name, and we've shut down school libraries instead of tax them at a rate that funds communities, funds healthcare, invests in housing, and in schools. Do you really think the system is the best that we can do? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Baumgartner.
Hi, John. And High School Board is that I'm Chris Baumgartner, and I'm from Quincy, Washington. And I'm a Quincy School Board member that just finished his last term in December. And I was a board member for eight years and worked for John, with John, for six and a half years. So I came today when I found out he was retiring and wanted to just share a few words with you as a board and with John and staff. So again, I've had the opportunity to work with John for six and a half years. And I've been in a lot of leadership roles, like probably a lot of you have been over the years. I come from Eastern Washington, and I was president of our Hay growers Association. So I worked with farmers. I worked with our local Habitat for Humanity, was one of the founders of that group. I've worked with our church as a council member. I've worked with the 12th Legislative District as a committee chair. I've been a head track and field and cross-country coach in college and in high school. And had been a teacher for 15, was a teacher for 15 years, a farmer for 30 years, an athletic coach for 35 years. So I've worked with a lot of different groups over the years. This is not about me. This is about John. All of those leadership experiences that I've had is working with John was the best. It really was. His compassion and respect for students, faculty, and community were dear to my heart. And so many times I've had that experience with John. It's just many of the things that we worked on together. Over the years, he amplified student voice and reshaped every leadership team in our buildings and throughout our whole district. I had admired his leadership, stewardship, and care for each one of our individual board members. And I think that's really something that he really had a real knack for, as you heard from Alex, for example. He made a district theme out of community forums, workshops. We went to WASD conferences together. We even went to the National Conference in San Antonio together, our board, many of our board members. We created the first equity policy in Eastern Washington. That was one of the first ones that came about in Eastern Washington, and John was the driving force.
Chris, I have to interrupt you because the three minutes have expired.
It has already.
Yeah.
Anyway, I want to complete this by, if I could just say, is that, is that, John, you are the best.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Kay Baumgartner.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but can John come up a little bit?
I have no objection. Does anyone have an objection? Hello, Kay.
I'm Kay Baumgartner, and I'm also from Quincy, Washington. I worked as, well, I'm a preschool director, but also a community member and past elementary counselor. So lots of time working with him, talking with him, and through my husband to him. Yeah, that goes. So the only thing I can say, though, is you look bigger than I remember. John, have you grown? But you've always been so big in ideas and your ambitions and dreams and what you've accomplished. And your heart is so big. You're so there for people in Quincy, wherever you are, I'm sure. So anyway, you're also big in energy. I've always thought, golly, he just keeps going and going. And you remind me of the Energizer Bunny. So this was supposed to, because we never had a time to have a goodbye party for John. And so I'm sort of taking some opportunity and excuse the levity, but here's your other gift. Okay? You just keep going and going, okay? I also wrote a poem for him, and I gave it to him once upon a time here, but I'm just going to read a part of it to you. Who needs a drum and long ears of pink? It sure isn't JB, do you think? He celebrates people with positive flair. John B. has abundant caring to share. With his affirming spirit and stature so tall, John leaves out his calling, a model for all. So just as that pink hair, complete with those shades, keeps going and going, so do the accolades. We each have our thoughts of you to celebrate, our leader and friend who has made our lives great. A privilege it's been to rub shoulders with you, to be challenged and encouraged by the living you do. We can't help but love you and admire your zest, since your purpose in life is to give all your best. You and Annie touched lives here in Quincy. The seeds that were planted have been quite profound. We'll cherish the memories as we go apart, but your special persons will hold in our hearts. And... I know. It's my props. I needed props. So we had planned a going-away party for you, and it was going to be a luau. So as you all know probably, aloha means both hello and goodbye. And now as you are retiring, you're saying goodbye to part of your, oh, oh, profession. Oh, no. So I'll be really quick here. Okay, so you got to have this, John. Aloha for the goodbye, but also to retirement and who knows what, right?
Thank you.
You and Annie can have a blast. All right. And we love you and will always remember you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. The next person on the list is Catherine Furtick. Hi, Catherine.
Good evening. It's been a long school year, hasn't it? Okay. Good evening. My name is Catherine Furtick, and I now have three graduates from EPS as of last Friday. I've spent time reflecting back on how impactful so many people were in school on my children and their K-2 through 12 education. From the friendly faces and help from front office staff to kindergarten teachers patiently reassuring a nervous child, to librarians who inspired and nurtured a love of reading and writing, art discovery volunteers facilitating the exploration of art, yet another outlet to express creativity and curiosity, bus drivers who cultivate relationships with their riders, creating trust and safety, illustrated most recently and so well with the incident where a bus was hit and a fire broke out. A large factor in the ability to get the bus cleared quickly and safely was the relationship created by the bus driver's efforts to create trust and concern for the students throughout the year. He was recognized for this, and duly so. I'm very glad of that. Janitors, lunchroom staff, playgrounds, monitors, speech pathologists, Paris, security, and many others. My children still talk about them. They, along with so many teachers along the years, have poured into my children and so many others despite budget cuts, pandemic, the instability of a frequently troubled and changing leadership. They have carried our schools this far and continue to while facing some incredibly tough years and given our children, my children, so much while advocating for better for them. I would like to say that I appreciated seeing one of our board members at our high school's Percy Jackson performance. Our students and teachers work incredibly hard in these, and it's vital for our leadership to see what is important to our kids and community by attending as many events like these as possible. I also want to extend my appreciation for and acknowledge the efforts during the recent board workshop, emphasizing the need for increased advocacy in the legislature and to coordinate with interested stakeholders so they can contact legislators. Since next year is a heavy budget year, and we will need as many voices as possible, this is critical to prioritize and will show a true effort to collaborate with the community who have expressed the desire to work together with you. And a little side note, I'm going to be really fast. At the last meeting, I believe it was, where we listened to the building assessments, where they noted the areas of weakness, things that needed concern and the rate of concern, whether it was critical or if it was not addressed, would become critical. I noticed that there was a really a parallel between that and the teachers, the students, the community who report problems within the school itself. So I thought, well, that's interesting because they're treated with a lot more respect that assess the buildings than the people inside it. So I thought that was rather telling. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Adam Aguilera.
Good evening. Good evening. Dear Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Boyd, recently, the Evergreen Education Association took, oh, I'm sorry, Adam Aguilera, middle school teacher here in Evergreen. Recently, the Evergreen Education Association took a building-by-building vote on no confidence in district leadership. A supermajority of the membership across the district voted 92% in favor of no confidence. While the superintendent has chosen to step down, which shall be the legacy he is remembered for here in the Evergreen community, more is needed to address issues of leadership by the school board. As the individuals in power with decision-making authority, this board has the responsibility to address concerns around administrative managers and lead with a plan to rebuild relationships with staff and the community. Something bothering myself and many other staff members is feeling the fallout of all of our colleagues being cut and our students expressing their sadness of losing their teachers and librarians next year. After building community in my school for years, myself and three other teachers are being displaced to other schools despite having 16 years of seniority in this district. In the midst of this grief, we are dismayed to find out district administration is actually expanding next year. Why do we continue to see year after year of student-facing positions being cut, and yet management continues to grow? Each full-time district office manager position is making close to or more than the governor of Washington. And what is even the hiring process for these roles? Evergreen Public Schools is supposed to be an equal opportunity employer, and yet the top job opportunities in the district continues to be appointed. Management has sacrificed nothing, while Evergreen families, students, and staff are expected to have more crowded classrooms, less programs, and less safety. So what is the school board's plan to lead with a plan to rebuild relationships with staff? It's one thing to keep saying in this room, we should all get along together. But what is the work this leadership is willing to put into restoring confidence? Because ignoring a vote of no confidence from employees is not a plan. With new leadership being hired, this school board has an opportunity to meet its fiduciary responsibility in restructuring the district's management team to be lean, efficient, and have a clear timeline to restore critical student-facing positions like our librarian programs, academic interventionists, deans of students, and classroom educators and support staff. That would restore a lot of faith in the community. For my final thoughts, I would like to leave you with this poem. Support the hearts that light the room, not those who climb to shine afar. For children's dreams and teachers' grace should find their place in every plan, not in the costly, empty space where power seeks the upper hand.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Lindsay Rose.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Rose. I'm a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing in our district. I'm also a parent in the district. I also grew up in this district. So for lots and lots of reasons, I want to see us turn things around and head off in a better direction. Tonight, I am continuing with the poetry slam that's kind of emerged here. And I have never done this before, but I have a collection of haikus to share. And as a reminder, a haiku is a short poem. It is three lines long. The first line is five syllables, next is seven syllables, and then five. So each one is 17 syllables. So number one, Things Standardized Tests Don't Show. Ingenuity, Critical Thinking, Passion, Creativity. Number two, Things Standardized Tests Don't Show Part Two. Integrity, Love, Problem-Solving, Ambition, Creativity. Number three, titled Goodbye IDEA. No More Programs, One Size Fits All, by IDEA. Does this make sense? Number four, titled The Displaced Student. No Place For A Child Who's Different. No LRE, No Library. Number five, No More Excel. You've Low-Capped Our Greatest Thinkers. Potential Lost. Sad. Number six, titled Things That Drain School Budgets. Robust, Increased Admin, Contract Supplements, Golden Parachutes. Number seven, titled Who Do You Represent? No Teacher Voice, No Parent Choice. Who Do You Think Constituents Are? Number eight, We Need Help. Five Supes In Six Years. This Bus Is On Fire And Nobody's Driving. Number nine, Untitled. Tossed-Out Programs, Ignored Needs. You Can't Grow Gardens Without Any Seeds. Number 10, What I Love About Teaching. Laughing, Messy Projects, Aha Moments, First Words, Tiny Hand Signing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nora Rose.
Okay. Hi, my name is Nora. I'm a student in the district, and I'm here to read a poem I wrote. In the center of a city, there's a heart made of gold. Now we have no place to keep out the cold. Now we have no place with books, games, and chess, no person to help us reach our success. Without libraries, there's no place to protect us. We have no libraries. Who's driving this bus?
Thank you for your comments. Camille Lohman.
Hi, my name is Camille Lohman, and I'm a mother of a kindergartner here in the district. And I actually graduated from Union High School 15 years ago, like exactly today. And when I was a junior, I moved here February of my junior year, middle of the year, from a different state. I met with the principal at the time, and he provided an opportunity for me to do for my senior project that was then carried on beyond my graduation until, I believe, COVID, which was called UCru. And it was a freshman mentoring program for incoming freshmen. And throughout the process of planning that and being given that opportunity, it was then given to a group of other seniors. I was told that I could still keep it for my senior project, though. And to this day, still don't really know what happened. When I was 17, I When I was 17, I didn't really have the words to advocate for myself. I didn't have the emotional intelligence or the emotional capacity to be able to do that, and I did not have, really at that time, any adults around me or in the school who could help me advocate that to make sure that my voice was heard. So after that experience, which was relatively, you know, traumatic for a 17-year-old, I then wanted to make sure that I would have the opportunity to amplify the voices of youth, of students. I volunteered in various foster care-related, youth-related organizations throughout the last 15 years. And I felt silenced when I was 18, and by Evergreen. And I've felt silenced as an adult for moments, some miscommunications, some not. And, but now I have the words, I have the platform, I have a more support system, and I will not be silenced. But I do want to make sure that my advocacy and that my words are appropriate and effective and through meetings with the board and other leadership. The topic of communication can only be as effective as the recipient comes up a lot. And I personally look forward to ensuring that the two-way communication can occur. And I only have a couple of seconds left, and I really wanted to say something to Sullivan specifically, so I hope you give me a couple of extra seconds. Because young people dared to hope, change happened. I was one young person who dared to hope, and throughout the last year, I know I'm a stranger, but your poise is, and the way that you ask questions is very inquisitive. The video that you were on talking about next year's board, like I stopped and watched the whole thing. You're very captivating, and your words are very, again, you're very poised.
I'm afraid I have to stop you for time reasons, but thank you for your comments and your compliments.
You're going to change the world, Sullivan.
Jennifer Wallace. Jennifer Wallace.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Jennifer Wallace, and I am a teacher at Henrietta Lacks, and it is my pleasure to address you all on the behalf of every single teacher at Hila. So first, I want to thank the board for choosing to serve on the school board. I know it can be a time-consuming and stressful job. Many of you guys came into this position because you wanted to better your community, but you may have found, much to your chagrin, that it's mostly a job of listening to people complain, often angrily. As school board directors, you become often a lightning rod for your community's frustrations, and I am sorry for that. But in a way, teachers and school board directors have a lot in common. We both inherited this work in the same flawed and overtaxed systems, and we are both often expected to solve societal woes that are beyond our training and expertise and our job descriptions. But we show up and we try to solve them anyways because we believe in leaving the world a better place than we found it. And I see you all, and I thank you for your work. So before I state my concern, I want to state my intentions. I would like to see better communication and a more collaborative relationship between the board and the teachers and the community. I would like teachers to help guide, not just chastise, the board. And while I come here today with a concern and a request, my hope is that it is not viewed as a complaint but as a communication. My request today, in fact, my plea for you all is this. Please, please, please enact transparent hiring and placement processes going forward at the building level and the district office. Appointing an administrator without thorough and a transparent search, without including stakeholder feedback, is a bad way to start teacher-administrator relationships. It alienates and infantilizes the teaching staff, and it is a disservice to the incoming administrator. They need the teacher's confidence and buy-in. Teacher-admin relationships are not the same as traditional boss-worker relationships. They are not top-down. Admin are not foremen telling teachers to make more widgets and to make them faster. Education is a complex, highly nuanced, and often intuitive undertaking, and it requires teamwork, trust, and clear, bidirectional communication and decision-making amongst all levels in education. The current pattern of top-down, closed-door selection appointment of administrators ignores the teachers and our community and is blind to what creates a productive relationship. Additionally, we are a public school district serving the public with public funds. We are not a private corporation. As a public institution, we should have higher standards, and this should include demanding and enforcing transparent hiring and placement practices. We need the best, not the easiest. It is time we value our models, that we, time that we model the values that we teach our students and create better, more transparent, more democratic processes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Sandra Reader.
Good evening. Superintendent and board members and student representative Sullivan, I'm glad you're here. Tonight, I wanted to come to you and talk to you about community unity. And I really appreciate your art show. It was very creative, and of course, I have an art background, so that really excited me. I did bring the Freedom Ensemble, which is museum-quality work. My goal is to have this artwork in every school in America. And my professional business goal is to sell a million of these. And I know that sounds kind of ludicrous, but, you know, everybody has dreams, right, John? And the reason that I ask school districts to place the Freedom Ensemble in every school in the district is because it promotes unity. So if you have the bounding documents of our nation combined with the Gettysburg Address in every school, that provides opportunity for every student to see it, to belong to it, and to be empowered by it. Now, since I live here, and this is my home, I want to know all of you, each and all of you. And I also want to reward the community by acting upon placing a Freedom Ensemble in every school in the Evergreen Public School District. In return for your decision to do that, to support the student body and everybody associated with education in this district, my company will afford a 5% incentive into Evergreen Public School ongoing. So it doesn't matter if somebody in another state or even other counties in Washington, because I'm going to be visiting all school boards to accomplish this, that means that 5% of all those sales will come back to this district. It's my way of contributing to what I believe in, and I believe in the people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Please take the time to look at this before you leave. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sean Gundert.
Sean Gundert, they/them. I was asked to present here, verse from a colleague. "Hey, board members, shadows fall. You messed up big, dropped the ball. You drove our schools into the ground, hired bad leaders, let us down. Teachers, students, parents cry. You just ignore, let their hopes die. Making choices with closed ears left us all with growing fears. Leaders leaving, can't you see? You've messed up royally. Take a hint, face the mess. Fix it now and do your best. Blind decisions, deaf to please, ignoring hearts, ignoring needs. Trust is broken, can't you see? It's time to change your strategy. Listen up to voices here, parents, students, staff sincere. Hear them out, find a way to build some trust, light the way. For the future, fix what's wrong. Find respect and get along. Say you're sorry, make it right. Bring some hope back into sight. Hey, board members, shadows fall. Learn from the past, hear the call. Listen now, make things right. Lead us to a better light."
Thank you for your comments. Kristin Edmiston. Kristin, please correct me about how to pronounce your last name.
You pretty much got it.
Okay.
My name is Kristin Edmiston, and I teach at Evergreen High School. Tonight, I'm here to share publicly a petition signed by over 90% of our certificated staff that was presented to EHS Admin today. My purpose for sharing this here is for accountability and to encourage the rest of the district to be on the right side of this call for change. Recognizing the primary objective of the public school system is to foster a safe and conducive environment for learning and acknowledging the district's commitment to delivering great, appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and high expectations, it has become imperative to address the challenges posed by cellphone use among students. Cellphones present significant safety concerns. They facilitate activities such as class avoidance, distribution and consumption of illicit substances, invasion of privacy through unauthorized recording, and the propagation of violence via social media platforms. Moreover, they are frequently employed as instruments for cyberbullying, thus compromising the emotional well-being of our students. Headphones prevent students from hearing emergency announcements. Cellphones and headphones disrupt the depth of student engagement in the learning process, acting as compulsive distractions and enabling passive participation. They enable cheating to further hinder the learning process. The pervasive presence of cellphones and headphones inhibits effective instruction by disrupting the flow of lessons and impeding authentic interpersonal communication between students and educators. Additionally, their usage patterns are being unfairly leveraged to evaluate teacher performance, undermining the validity of student-engagement-centered assessments. Furthermore, research indicates that cellphone addiction exacerbates symptoms of anxiety and depression, posing a serious threat to the mental health of our student body. Moreover, the absence of clear cellphone policy deters qualified substitutes from accepting open positions at Evergreen High School, adversely impacting our ability to maintain instructional continuity in the event of staff absence. In light of these concerns, we, the undersigned, propose the enactment of a ban on cellphones, headphones, and all non-district-provided electronics within all classrooms at Evergreen High School. This measure will promote a more focused and conducive learning environment, fostering enhanced student participation and academic achievement. We recommend that by the return to work in August, Evergreen High School administration, in collaboration with staff, undertake research, planning, communication, and implementation of a comprehensive cellphone policy tailored to address the aforementioned issues and align with the needs of both staff and students. We trust that with responsive leadership and the collective effort of our school community, we can ensure the safety, well-being, and academic success of our students at Evergreen High School.
Thank you. Kristin. I wondered if you could come back? I have a clarifying question. Please.
Yes.
Is your petition on behalf of Evergreen's, Evergreen High School?
Evergreen High School, yeah, certificated staff.
Okay, Evergreen High certificated staff. Thank you.
Would you like a copy of the letter?
Sure. Thank you. I think that's all the speakers, as we had Kari first, and that's the name, unless there's another Kari, Liebert? Okay. This will conclude our public comment portion. Thank you all for your comments. The next item on the agenda is the board's consent agenda.
I move to approve the board's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent consent agenda.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Unanimous. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is the Flow Analytics Demographic Report. John?
Yeah, Nicole Daltozzo is our senior director of facilities, and she will be introducing our speaker today.
Good evening. So I'm going to introduce to you Alex Brosh, who is a senior population geographer and data analyst with Flow Analytics, and he'll be presenting an overview of our enrollment forecasts, also known as a demographic report. So enrollment forecasts are obtained by districts for use in the district's capital facilities plans. The forecast may also serve as a tool when looking at building utilization and programming as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Alex.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and thanks, Nicole, for that introduction. So as Nicole mentioned tonight, I'm going to present the 10-year enrollment forecast that Flow Analytics prepared for EPS. And I wanted to start out and mention that Flow Analytics is a group of demographers and geographers with offices in Portland, Vancouver, and Seattle. And we primarily help school districts and local governments across the Pacific Northwest prepare enrollment forecasts, demographic and socioeconomic analyses, attendance area boundary reviews. And we specifically prepared 10-year enrollment forecasts for EPS, and we developed three scenarios, which we labeled the low, middle, and high scenarios of district-wide forecasts that represent the total number of students that live within and outside the district boundary but attend EPS schools and programs. We prepared forecasts for district-wide and by individual grade, but also prepared more granular forecasts for each individual school. And I'd like to point out that our enrollment forecasts incorporate the recent attendance area boundary changes that happened over the last few years, and that's why I bring this map up to show the elementary, middle, and high school attendance areas. So enrollment forecasts are influenced by a variety of factors which can be organized into three main categories. The first is an assessment of the historical enrollment, and we analyzed headcount enrollment from October 2017 to 2023, looking at it by individual grade in school, as well as the geographic distribution of student residences and participation in special or non-traditional programs, as well as transfer rates, which could be students living outside the district but attending EPS schools or inter-district transfers. The second piece is demographic characteristics of the region and trends of population change over time, including the number of births, women of childbearing age that live within the district, and total fertility rates. Lastly, we review current land use, anticipated residential development, and the average number of students that are generated by single-family and multifamily housing. So in this first section of demographic and residential development analysis, the whole process of preparing enrollment forecasts starts more broadly than enrollment, with total population and births within the district and the region as a whole. So the county added about 80,000 residents in the 2000s and additional 78,000 in 2010s. That's about a 46% growth rate in 20 years. The district grew at a slower rate than the county each decade, adding about 23,000 residents in the 2000s and 18,000 in the 2010s. That's 35% growth rate in 20 years. And this map, in addition to that table, is just showing how the nesting of the table works and that the school district is comprised of portions of the city of Vancouver, Camas, and unincorporated Clark County. and unincorporated Clark County. So one factor that's been hindering enrollment growth has been the slow growth in the child population within the district, and this table shows the proportion of the population under the age of 18 has been changing in relation to the population over the age of 18. So according to the decennial census counts, the district has added approximately 39,000 residents or 35% age 18 and older between 2000 and 2020. In comparison, the school district population, which is ages 5 to 17, grew by only 2,700 or 11%. And the number of children under age 5 fell by 1,149 or 11.5% in the same period. So in that last line of the table, you see that the proportion of EPS population under the age of 18 was about 30% in 2000, 27% in 2010, and then 23% in 2020. The Washington Office of Financial Management publishes population projections, and there's three different versions here. I think the slide got missed, but suffice to say that Clark County's population growth is projected to be slower in the next two decades through 2040 than they were in 2000 to 2020. So that's going to continue to see growth in the county, but just at a slower rate. This next slide shows student generation rates that were calculated for the district because housing type is an important indicator of the expected number of students that each housing unit yields. So for instance, we often observe that single-family housing units yield more students than multifamily housing, but that varies based on factors such as housing unit size, the number of bedrooms, housing costs and neighborhood demographics. Student generation rates also vary by region and housing subtypes, particularly if a single-family is detached or attached, like a townhome, or if multifamily is market rate or income restricted. So this table shows the SGRs for single-family and multifamily housing based on the October student location residences and new residential construction from 2017 to 2023. So in summation, you can see on the right side for single-family housing built within that time, they typically yield .341 students per single-family unit. In comparison, multifamily housing produces 1.125 students per housing unit. Flow also used residential data that was tracked by Clark County, the cities of Vancouver, Camas and the district itself to assess housing trends over the last few years and into the future. So based on that information, we saw that approximately 7,000 potential housing units are being tracked by those entities, and of that total, just over 2,500 or 35% are single-family units, and the remaining 65% or 4,700 units will be multifamily. During this analysis, we tried to incorporate as many details of the prospective developments as possible, so not only the number of units, but their current status, so we can assess how many of those units might be built within the 10-year timeframe. The highest number of potential units are expected in Fisher Landing Elementary School attendance area, and the majority of these units are part of two large prospective multifamily projects, the Fisher Quarry and Vancouver Innovation Center, both of which are currently in planning phases, so the completion of all the units will most likely not occur within the 10-year forecast period. But then other elementary school attendance areas that are anticipated to experience the most growth are Harmony Elementary School and Columbia Valley Elementary School. Perspective housing units are unevenly distributed among the six middle school attendance areas, with the highest being in the Shahala Middle School attendance area and the lowest in Frontier. Similar patterns are expected at the high school level. The Mountain View High School attendance area, as well as Union attendance area, include roughly 4,000 and 2,000 housing units per attendance area, whereas Heritage and Evergreen will only have prospective 400 units per attendance area. The next section is looking at historical enrollment. So as you are probably well aware, district enrollment has been decreasing over the last few years. In our analysis, we looked at 2017 to 2023. There were 843 fewer students between 2017 and 2019, and that was exacerbated by the loss of about 1,300 students in 2020. Enrollment continued to decline each subsequent year by about 700, 200 and 414 from 2020 to 2023. During that historical period of study, grades K through 12 experienced their largest cohorts before 2020, and the majority of grades, including kindergarten, third and fifth through 10, experienced their smallest cohorts in 2023, which you can see in this chart. The smallest cohorts are highlighted in blue, so most of them being in 2023, whereas the largest cohorts in this study period are highlighted in orange in 2017. This couple tables is pretty small, I know, but this is looking at individual enrollment for each individual school by year. So a couple of the highlights are that K through 5 enrollment has been decreasing over the six, seven-year period. In that time, there's about 2,100 fewer K through 5 students than there were in 2017. Enrollment in grades 6 through 8 increased a little bit at the beginning of this period, but has also been in decline over the seven-year period, a total of about 855 students. Enrollment in grades 9 through 12 has also been decreasing over the period, but has seen a slight increase in 2023. Over the seven-year period, 9th through 12th grade enrollment decreased by about 500 students. This map is showing student density in 2023, and I like to show this to point out that we geocode the student residences to analyze residential enrollment trends by attendance area and transfer rates, so understanding if students live outside the district boundary or if they transferred to a school other than their neighborhood school based on their attendance area. So when I'm talking about enrollment, we think about it kind of from two different perspectives. Building attendance, or what I've been describing as enrollment generally, that's the number of students that are literally enrolled at the school. That's including kids that live outside the district boundary, intra-district transfers and participation in special programs, whereas we also look at enrollment based on residence, so the number of students that live in a certain region, specifically their attendance area. That's more reliable for planning for the future of facilities because it's not subject to student choice, such as intra-district transfers or attendance to special programs. So based on Flow's analysis of October 2023 enrollment, a total of 985 students living outside the district boundary are enrolled in EPS schools. That's about 4.5%. Overall, about 3,400 students residing in the district transferred to a school other than their neighborhood school based on the attendance area in which they live, and that amounts to an intra-district transfer rate of about 16.5%. The largest percentage of those transfers occurs in high school grades with an intra-district transfer rate of about 18.7%. We prepare residents' attendance matrices for each grade group to gain an understanding of how students are transferring between the schools within the district. So for instance, in this middle school matrix, we're looking at Cascade Middle School on the top row, and you see that they have 896 students residing within the attendance area. Of those, 763 enroll with Cascade Middle School, while the remainder enroll with EPS schools, other EPS schools amounting to about 15% of enrollment. If you look down the column, we see that 763 students that live in that attendance area and are still enrolled in that school, but all the other students that end up attending Cascade. That's a transfer rate of about 8%. And we like to prepare these because it's a different perspective than a lot of times districts are thinking about enrollment from this geographic perspective, and it really helps reveal patterns of student choice and quantify some of the district policies. So for instance, we know that Frontier Middle School has a low transfer out rate and a high transfer in rate, which makes sense when you know that Frontier hosts the dual-language immersion program. That's helpful because of the school began to re-achieve capacity because of any program EPS could consider limiting transfers or adding additional capacity. Next, we actually get into preparing the enrollment forecast. I'm going to go over the methodology as quickly as I can, and you can come back and ask questions if you'd like, but once we have all this information compiled, we prepare the 10-year forecast, starting with a birth forecast through 2028, because we need to understand how many of those births are going to become kindergartners five years later. And our birth forecasts are based on population projections by age and sex, and we use cohort change ratios, which are based on historical trends, to forecast the 2030 population by age group. Those projections are then paired with age-specific birth rates of women of childbearing age within the district, and that completes the birth forecast. We then take, compare historical births to kindergartners five years later to understand what we call the kindergarten-to-birth ratio. And these ratios are applied to forecasted births to then prepare kindergarten projections. Once we understand how many kindergartners might be entering the district in the future, we can look to the progression of students from one grade to the next. So we look at cohort sizes as they change over time by calculating grade progression ratios. That's the ratio of enrollment in a specific grade in a given year to the enrollment of the same age cohort the previous year. So these trends help build the foundation of the enrollment forecasts, and they embed implicit assumptions about the level of net migration into the district or out of it, and choices of enrollment into secondary schools and participation in special programs. So the number of students enroll in the district is largely influenced by how many school-aged children reside within the district. And as mentioned, we use those population projections for 2030 of childbearing age women that reside within the district to come up with a birth forecast. The number of births in the district remained relatively steady in 2011 to 2015, averaging about 1,835 births, but that 1,699 births that we see kind of in the middle of this table in 2017, 2018, that was a significant decline from previous years, and that is the cohort that's going to be eligible to enroll in kindergarten in 2023. So you see down that column, the 1,354 kindergartners. That's quite a bit smaller than any previous years except for 2020, likely due to COVID. So in the middle scenario, we think that the district births are going to be moderately increasing. That's where we see the forecast to the right from 2022 out through 2027. Those numbers start to resemble pre-pandemic cohorts, but not quite as many births in the district as we saw from 2011 to 2015. The kind of bottom line of the table here is showing that annual K-to-birth ratio, which is a key metric in representing the combination of net migration between birth and age 5 and the share of those five-year-olds that end up enrolling in EPS kindergarten. So the ratios have fluctuated throughout the historical period and they're recovering from their 2020 low of .75, but have not returned to pre-pandemic levels. The middle scenario of our forecasts see a slight increase in the K-to-birth ratios in the next few years before they stabilize at .89 for the remainder of the forecast period. How that impacts kindergarten enrollment is that before the forecast period, kindergarten averaged about 1,547 students per year, including a low of 1,354 in 2023 and a high of 1,748 in 2018. So when we apply those forecasted K-to-birth ratios to the birth forecasts, we see that the kindergarten enrollment is expected to moderately increase in association with the birth forecast, but not until the smaller birth cohorts of 2018 to 2020 are kindergartners in 24, 25 and 26. Because there's a lot of variability in K-to-birth ratios, we prepare a low, middle and high forecast for kindergarten. And you can see in this chart that the low scenario has a K-to-birth ratio that remains at about .8 for the next year and then increases only to .85 through the forecast period. That's going to result in roughly 34 to 75 fewer kindergarten students throughout the forecast period. Conversely, you see the red line, that's the high scenario, that's going to result in about 33 to 59 more kindergartners per year throughout the forecast period. This table is showing the grade progression ratios that I mentioned earlier. This is historical information from 2017 to 2023, and you can see in each year except for 2019 to 2020, that GPRs for most grades have consistently been above 1, which means that the district often sees a net gain of students year by year for each cohort. And cohorts progressing from kindergarten to first grade and eighth to ninth grade typically have comparatively high GPRs. Those are those values above 1, highlighted in green. GPRs at other early elementary grades also depict cohort growth as they move throughout elementary school. So the final column in this table shows our assumptions about future grade progression ratios in our middle scenario, and they're influenced by historical averages excluding 2019 to 2021, because you can see in that 2019 column, due to the impacts of COVID, the GPRs were much lower, and there was some rebound in later years. So we account for that and base our forecasts on the four-year average that's not including those outliers. This chart is showing the three district-wide enrollment forecast scenarios, low, middle and high, and we show in the next few tables and charts, we focus on the middle scenario because that's what we believe is most likely to occur. And what we see here is a decrease from 22,500 in 2023 to 20,740 in 10 years or 2033. And that's representing a loss of about 1,759 students in that 10-year period. And that's despite most of the GPRs expected to be one or more in the forecast period, but it's because of those births and the continued decline of child population in the district that we're going to see enrollment decline likely through the 10-year period. And I'll just mention real quickly that the low and high scenarios are prepared by adjusting the assumptions about population growth, births, the kindergarten-to-birth ratio and grade progression ratios. So from a grade perspective, K through 5 enrollment is expected to decrease for the next three years, but then increase annually throughout the remainder of the forecast period. That's largely due to the birth forecast. So over the 10-year period, K through 5 enrollment is going to increase by approximately 450 students or 5%. Grade 6 through 8 enrollment is expected to decline in both the five-year periods, resulting in 10-year loss of about 500 students or 10.6%. Grades 9 through 12 enrollment is expected to decrease in every year of the forecast period. That's mostly due to the drop that you see in kindergarten through fifth grade enrollment from 2017 to 2023 and how those students are moving through the system, becoming sixth through 12th graders and their impact on enrollment as they move out and are later replaced by larger K through 5 cohorts. This chart, I'll just mention briefly, is breaking down those district-wide forecasts even further to individual grades. You can kind of see the size of cohorts based on the shading, so lighter colors are smaller cohorts, darker colors are larger cohorts. You can see how, looking at this 10-year timeframe, you have smaller cohorts from 2023 to 2025 in kindergarten and how they're going to be moving through the system and causing enrollment to decline for those upper grades, but then will be replaced by comparatively higher or larger cohorts 2028 through 2033. Lastly, different demographics throughout the district, rates of residential development, grade progression ratios for specific schools help us prepare school-level forecasts. So a couple highlights are that of the 22 elementary schools that have attendance areas, 16 are expected to experience enrollment decline in the next five years. But enrollment in all the elementary schools is expected to increase between 2028 and 2033. So over the 10-year period, it's expected that enrollment will be higher at 15 of the elementary schools. And these 15 schools add a total of about 516 students, while the losses at the remaining seven schools amount to just 75 students. One of the schools that will see the most growth potentially will be Harmony, and that's based on residential development data and outlook of more housing units. Five of the six middle schools with attendance areas are expected to experience enrollment decline between 2023 and 2028, while Pacific Middle School is expected to gain enrollment over that same period. And that's largely due also to prospective residential development in the attendance area. In the second five-year period, the enrollment trajectory is expected to continue, with only Pacific expected to gain enrollment. And then, over the 10-year period, only Pacific is expected to increase by approximately 30 students, while the other five middle schools will experience declining enrollment. At the high school level, all four of the high schools with attendance areas are expected to decrease from now until 2023. Steepest declines are going to be at Evergreen High School and Mountain View High School. And over the 10-year period, each high school is expected to lose potentially 300 to 350 students. With that, I'll open it up with questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Alex? It's a lot of information.
Would you mind going over slide on page 23 again?
Yes. Which would be...
Births in kindergarten?
Yep, births in kindergarten, right here.
I just needed to hear that again.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, this is kind of a complex chart, so I'll just try to put it into different words here. So on the top line, we have historical births, and these are aligned to the kindergarten cohort. So in that first column, 2011, 2012, that's 2011 births from September through December. And then January to August 2012, there were 1,860 births to residents of the district. And then that aligns to the 2017, 2018 kindergarten cohort right below it. So of those 1,860 births, there was 1,735 kindergartners, which represents about .93% of those births. That's the capture rate or the kindergarten-to-birth ratio. So if you look at that ratio to births, you see that it's always below 1.0. That's indicating that there's more births occurring within the district than kindergartners showing up. And that often has to do with people having their children here, but then moving elsewhere or having options, especially since 2020, we've seen, you know, that ratio has not gone up or above one for a lot of districts because you have choice to homeschool or go to other non-public options. So one of the things I will say is, like, this is not an uncommon trend that I've seen when working with other Oregon and Washington school districts, is that K-to-birth ratio has not recovered to the pre-pandemic level. For you guys, it was, you know, roughly .94 before 2020, and since then, it's been more like .82. We think that that will increase a little bit going forward, as you see to .89 throughout the forecast period. That's largely because of continued population growth in Clark County, and hoping and thinking, believing that there will be more births because that is the trend of births within the district.
Thank you for this analysis. I know the last two pages will come in handy with looking down the road at possible school closures. It's interesting, the kindergarten, or excuse me, K-5 dips down, but then it does recover within the next 10 years.
Yes, and that, staying on this slide, that's largely due to prospective increase in the number of births, and then those turning into kindergartners, more like they did before 2020.
You said this is the middle forecast?
Right, right. So then, the low scenario is represented here by that blue line. That's looking more like a decline to about 19,200 rather than 20,740 in the middle, out to 2020, 30, 2033, excuse me.
How do you arrive at the low and middle scenarios? Is that like a standard deviation or something else?
Yeah, not quite exactly, but it's tailored to the trends in women of childbearing age, births, grade progression ratios. Roughly, though, we don't want to go much above or below 10% different from the middle scenario. So yeah, that is kind of a confidence interval of like about 90%.
Okay. I don't know if the others remember, I have this recollection that the forecasts from 10 years ago were much higher overall, reaching this point. And you might not be able to, but if you can, speak to what changed between 10 years ago and today about the projections. It's like, I guess, where did demographers go wrong? Was it COVID, or was it other things?
COVID certainly was a big interruption, you know. Forecasts, especially long-term ones, are based on historic trends. So when you have something like a phenomenon like COVID come about, it causes a disruption to those trends. But on top of that, before COVID happens, we still saw, based on that population chart, if I go way back to the beginning, and we saw from 2000 to 2020...
The growth in Evergreen was smaller than the growth in Clark County.
That is true, and then especially looking at it broken down by age group, it's that it was kind of hiding all along that, you know, population's growing. You see that happening, you see homes being built, you think we should be gaining enrollment. But behind the scenes, when you break it down by grade group, you see here how age 5 to 17 wasn't actually growing in 2010, 2020, especially under age 5. And that share of the population of under age 18 has been declining. And this too has been something I've seen in many Oregon and Washington school districts, that it's been on the decline. It's largely due to the lower number of births, that's a national trend that's happening. Families are having fewer children than they did in decades previously. I did not, we didn't prepare the forecast from earlier, but I can understand that looking at population growth as a whole, residential development, the number of housing units, and enrollment growth, probably before 2017, when we were looking at it, could produce a long-term projection that would be more on the upward trajectory. But then after COVID, what we've been a bit surprised by has been the continued lack of enrollment at the kindergarten level, and just understanding that families have more choice than they probably did before, or realize that they do. So fewer of those births are ending up as kindergartners in public K-12 school districts.
So the primary controller is additional choice or awareness of choice for the kindergarten cohort each year?
That's one major factor, yes.
Are there other major factors?
Well, I'd say also the availability of, you know, programs and, you know, the... Yeah, I'll leave it at that, but beyond demographic factors, yeah.
If their honor, if the analysis didn't reach that far. I've been, we had a demographer report about three years ago. And in that report, they talked about the in-migration, the purchase of homes in the area, being by people who had no children, couples and buyers who had no children, and that the, that the population was aging within Evergreen. Does that comport with what you saw in your trends?
Yeah, one thing that would be prudent to keep an eye on is when we're specifically talking about homes and housing, and how many students are produced from them, is to update this analysis, that student generation rate analysis. So if we compare this to years prior, I would imagine that there would be higher student generation rates because there were more children being born to the families living in new housing, and that has since been decreasing for many districts, including EPS. So there's, by these numbers show that there's fewer students, if you looked over time. And if we continue to monitor this, you might see that play out and even further decreases in the number of students per household.
Okay. It is a lot to take in. Are there any other questions for a demographer?
I had a couple of questions. Part of what Rob was just talking about, because of birth rate is like one of the primary factors, because I always think about people who move into the district, and if there's any, like, indicators around that, other than the housing projections and where new developments are going in. And based on the number 12, where it talks about the highest attendance areas, and it shows Mountain View, Union, Fisher's Landing, Chehalah. Later, it showed Mountain View is decreasing enrollment. So I'm just wondering what the correlation between those two are, if I'm missing something.
I can follow up with you a bit on that one. But to answer your question, yeah, we do try to look at each individual attendance area as one component. These student generation rate analyses were done at the district-wide as a whole. But looking at each individual school, we looked at their grade progression ratios and their number of kindergarten students and how they progressed through the grades. So I would have to follow up on those exact numbers for Mountain View to see if there's a discrepancy or explain that a little further.
Yeah, and then, because I mean, I think about variables like economic factors, whether housing will be affordable, jobs, if we'll have jobs in this area for people to, that it would be attractive for people to move to this area from other parts of the country as well.
Yeah, I'll just mention that that is kind of one factor for thinking about that kindergarten-to-birth ratio and how there tends to be more births in the district than end up being kindergartners. That could also, with a little bit more in-depth analysis, that could point to the housing affordability and people being able to afford a home of the size to support a family. And it could be indicative of them having their child here and then moving elsewhere where they can afford a home that has more bedrooms and supports a larger family. So yeah, housing cost is also an important factor.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Alex? Do you have any, Sullivan? Okay. Thank you for the presentation and for the detailed work on these forecasts. It'll go a long way.
You're very welcome. If you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, the next item on the agenda are two matters. Or is one matter reserved for board action in the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between Evergreen Public Schools and the public school employees of Evergreen Office Clerical Bargaining Group. Let's see what we got here. Action will require a motion to approve the ratification.
I move to approve the ratification of the contract. Second.
Second. Director Bookenegre has moved, and we'll call it Director Wilson has seconded, to approve the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank everyone for their hard work in getting it done, and both sides came together very well.
Thank you. I don't think we could ever underestimate the value of our office clerical employees, especially Will. I'm not going to call any of them out, they're all very important to us. And I want to take an opportunity just to express appreciation for the work they do. Many have been with us for decades, right Lori? A long, long time. And they continue to hold our schools and our different departments together in ways that would be impossible without them. Thank you. If there is no other discussion, the vote is to approve the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you again for your work on that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a department update informational item. There have been adjustments to the Superintendent Policy and Procedure 2190. No action is required, but if there are questions for Superintendent Voight about the action, we'll open up a space for that. No, we're on the highly capable. Yeah. I wonder, John, if you could summarize the changes?
Do we have somebody from the teaching and learning team that can summarize the changes for us in the highly capable? I cannot.
Okay.
I know they highlighted the changes on the documentation, to be able to share that with you, was my understanding. Lori said she can share something with you if you'd like to see those changes.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. She said this is evidence that the district's met the requirements for a report to OSPI on highly capable. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent report.
Thank you. I want to start my report today with an apology and a thank you. I want to apologize to the Hila staff for the appointment that I made without interacting with the staff previously. So that is something that I will own and just share my apologies to the staff. I'll make a written apology as well. That's not my practice. My practice is to go out and talk to the staff, get leadership qualities from them. We've done that ever since that and all the ones before, in my haste at a time when I was super busy and quite frankly, excited about the candidate that expressed interest. After talking to her, I made that decision without that, and so I own that, I apologize, and you all deserve better than that. And a thank you to you for still embracing Allison in the way that you have. She's a dynamic leader, she's going to be great for your school. And I just want to thank you for leaning into her leadership as well, because I think she'll do an excellent job for you. So I wanted to say that before you leave, and... Yes? Yep. You did, and you did a nice job and a very professional job of coming forward with a concern. And I also appreciate your approach and the way you handled that, so thank you for that. You're welcome to leave if you want now. I know you guys wanted to go, so I wanted to stop you and just make that apology and share my appreciation for you and the staff there. Phenomenal program, and you got a great leader, and you have a great future ahead of you, so thank you for that. Also want to share that I've been working real hard on a transition doc. I've been reminding our senior leadership team to fill out their parts to that. So I've been sending emails, and they've been doing a good job of putting together a nice transition plan. As our new leader comes in, we'll have links and a real, a lot of information to share that will be high-level summaries of what's happening. And again, I'm happy to, if the appointment is made after I am done, come back and do any volunteer transition work with the individual that you hire. Today, I had the opportunity and honor to do interviews with students at Union High School. And everywhere I go in the school district, I'm reminded of the brilliance, look at the art in front of you. I was able to sit with about seven or eight different students who did, who were sophomores in their English class. And part of their exit requirement for that class is to interview with somebody. And the brilliance, the passion, you hear a lot of this generation of students and a lot of negative points about them. And our future is so bright with these young people in our system. They're brilliant, they're phenomenal. And it was just amazing to have the opportunity to sit with those young folks for half a morning, half a day this morning. I am a little disappointed that the superintendent choices, I don't get to choose. They let somebody with some art background do that, which is wise and more objective, so that's a smart thing to do. But when I heard superintendent thing first, I thought, oh, I get to go, I don't get to choose. And that's a wise thing because... And that's a wise thing because I'm a stick figure guy, but I do appreciate the art that is so beautiful here and the brilliance and the talent of our students. Just want to lead with some thank yous. I want to lead with thank yous to Chris and Kay for coming in. Chris is humble, he's an amazing leader, and I learned, we actually coined the word criticisms because he has so many brilliant things. And my favorite criticism is don't leave your expectations in your pocket. Let folks know what you want and what you need, and I've carried that forward in that leadership thing. You're amazing, and thank you for coming all the way from Quincy down here to do that. You shocked and surprised me at the bar, and it's beautiful to see you. I want to thank the, in my very last board meeting, I want to thank the board that gave me the opportunity. Thank you for entrusting me and being on this journey in those, these very difficult two and a half years of some very difficult choices, some very difficult things that we had to engage in. And I feel like we've left the district in a better place, I really do, and with a great opportunity to move forward in ways that wouldn't have been possible without your leadership. Also, need to mention Victoria Bradford because she was the president at the time and hired me. Many, many conversations leading up to that appointment, and Victoria was instrumental in that. So many teachers, students, secretaries, bus drivers, coaches, all the folks that in the buildings I've had the opportunity to visit in the last two and a half years have made an indelible impression on me. The students, the brilliance of the students that you see here have been just a pleasure to interact with all of these young people across all of the different schools for all of the visits and special events that I've gone to. To Covenant and Sullivan, I made a, also did a thank you and an apology to Sullivan because for about eight months I called you Taylor. But what I said is, in my defense, your parents gave you two first names. So that was, that was the joke that I made. But you have absolutely set a bar. I've worked with board reps for approximately eight years now, and I have never met anybody, and you and Covenant together, that have had the dedication, staying to the end of the board meetings, going to every event, the board work, the student board rep work, the work with the student advisory council, going to WASDA, and I just really appreciate you. And I agree with Camille when she said, you're going to be everybody's boss, I suspect. I'm going to predict right now that you could take my name out here and put Superintendent Sullivan Taylor in there. I think that's a, that's a prediction I'm going to make. So well done, and thank you. You heard it here first, folks. To our superintendent leadership team, Tracy Thompson, Nicole Del Toso, Bobby Height, Ellen Wiesner, Heather Fowler, Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, Craig Bernbach, phenomenal, phenomenal leaders. And I can't thank you enough to Jennifer Jacobson, the master forecaster, the budget, the amazing budget person. You are the best I've ever worked with in terms of your budgeting. Janay Gomes, your competence, your hard work and your effort, and I know that you do a lot of hard things and take a lot of grief from people, but I've never worked with anybody as competent and hardworking and who stands on her integrity and supports people in the way that you do, in ways that people don't see. People sometimes see the negative, so I just appreciate you and all that you've done and appreciate this team. I'm going to get emotional. Dang it, I was not going to get emotional. Lori! Dang it. Thought I could get through this. Couldn't have done it without you. You're a force. You're amazing. And always my wife, Annie, she's been just an incredible support to me through all the challenges and things that we've dealt with here and has been there for me. So I'm so thankful for this opportunity, so thankful that you've entrusted me in leadership to get us through these tumultuous times, and so honored to have been your superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm honored to have been on a board with you superintendent, but we're going to, we're going to reserve all our comments for board comments, if that's all right with everyone. I almost jumped in there when I shouldn't have. The next item on our agenda is the good news report. Craig Bernbach, are you here?
Well, thanks for making that hard to follow, John. There's a lot of good news, so I want to, I want to start thanking the board and a special thank you to Sullivan and John both. This will be your last board meeting, and Sullivan and Covenant's not here. I just really appreciate your partnership with, with me and my, you know, the people in our department when we wanted videos and, you know, we showed up and you always worked with us and gave your point of view to make sure that we were representing you and reaching out to students. So thank you. And John, I'll try to make the, your last good news report very, you know, full of good news. I do want to start with talking about graduations. It's not on this good news report, but of course, we had all the graduations last week. That was seven broadcasts of streamed graduations, so seven schools. So our six high schools in Archway all streamed from McKenzie Stadium and recorded. And I do want to recognize, we don't do that with a lot of people, and Matt Griffin and Wade Ferguson, they organize that, just those two. And they bring in some support staff, and they work with their IT department, and of course with Kale Pylon, Heather Fowler, and Shane Gardner, security, so many people. But those are really long days for them to make sure that those broadcasts look good and that they're available for all our families. And they've just gotten so much better over the last few years, and so I just wanted to make sure we recognized that. Then I'll, I'll move down to, to events that have happened in the last few weeks. Cascade Middle School had a wonderful end of the year kind of Pacific Islander cultural celebration. There was food, crafts, and performances from native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander groups. Director Wilson was there. You could see him doing, apparently he's a little better at art than maybe you, John, because he was in there helping out. I want to point out this story from Riverview Elementary School, a buddy bench story. And this really, I encourage everyone to, to watch this story and see how our students, five in particular students used their student voice to make a really positive change at Riverview Elementary School. They all read the same book, four kindergartners and one fifth grader. They read a book called The Buddy Bench Book. A buddy bench, if people don't know, it's placed in the school somewhere, usually near the playground or toward recess. And basically, a student who's feeling like they want someone to play with, maybe not connecting, feeling like they don't belong, they go sit on the bench. Other students see that, and they come over and they connect with that person, with that, with that student. So they basically, the students said, we should have a buddy bench. And the four kindergartners and the one fifth grader separately both wrote, they, working with their teachers, Elizabeth Brawley, the principal. And fast forward, they have a buddy bench. They have two buddy benches, and it was with a community partnership that made that buddy bench. You can really see all the parts of the strategic plan working in this story, so I encourage people to watch that. Our grad walks, multiple high schools, we have pictures here of Henry A. Delax and Evergreen High School and also Heritage High School. These events are just amazing. Where the high school soon-to-be graduates, now are graduates, they come and they're, they're fill graduation garb, and they visit the elementary schools. And I think this is an amazing thing for both the older and the younger students. I will mention we're doing our social, and social media end-of-year celebrations where we get out, the three of us get out to every school to celebrate one event from each school. So we have a lot of fun runs and field days and talent shows. So just please pay attention to our social media for that. White East Middle School had, I think, their first-ever end-of-the-school-year volleyball tournament. It was students versus students, and then the big thing was students versus staff who clearly were wearing student uniforms. And I will say, the best thing about this is that nobody got hurt. I was there, and I was very excited that no one got hurt. The students did win, so that was great.
That's my question, yeah.
Carnivals, so many end-of-years, and the weather has really done a great, you know, has been helpful lately, hopefully it'll continue. One other thing I want to mention, Burnt Bridge Elementary School had a Family Resource Center Fair last week as we headed to summer. Their FCRC person worked together with a bunch of community partners to basically have a resource fair where Powell was there, the library was there, Clark College, just a lot of, lot of our community partners for our families as they go off into the summer to connect with them and possibly get resources. And finally, we had a substitute appreciation event right here in this room a few weeks ago where we celebrate our substitutes, which we know how valuable they are and how difficult a job they, they have sometimes. And they were treated, of course, to a performance from our students. Chehalah Middle School Orchestra were, were excellent and really made the event, they had a centerpiece for the event. So if there aren't any questions, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next on our agenda, it reads, student board representative recognition. John, do you have something? Or is it me? It's me. Let's start with Ginny. Sullivan, we want to recognize, like John did, just how transformative it has been for us all to have you advising us on the board. I really appreciate that you took to heart from the very first day the invitation to speak. Combined with Covenant's quiet wisdom, whenever you lean in to speak, or speak with Covenant, he says something that really helps keep a focus on students. He's done it so much, and so do you. But your energy and wisdom have, have changed the way we make decisions. And I'm really looking forward to your successors. I know you probably had a hand in helping choose them because I know they're going to stand on the work of great people, stand on the shoulders of great people, whatever the metaphor is. But we have some gifts and cards for you and Covenant, and I think Ginny already gave hers, but those are all Covenant's?
We've already gave them.
Oh, you already gave them. I have one too. I figure you're going off to college, and so you're probably going to need a game to get to know some people. And I couldn't bring myself to the level of giving you a non-family oriented game because you just don't do that for students. So we've got the Family Edition Eight Plus of Cards Against Humanity. One for each of you that you can use in the apartment or dorm or wherever it is you're going to.
Just make sure they're over eight.
Make sure they're over eight. And if you happen to combine them with other decks that I hear are out there, that's none of my business. So there's one for Covenant here too. Just have to make sure that it gets to him. Thank you for your service to us and to the students, really. And of course, that's my card because you'll always have a reference, I think, from each of us. If you need it, just let us know. Do you have any advice for us? Anything to drop a mic with?
I don't know if I'm going to drop this. My only advice would just to be to keep listening to students and families and all of our pleas and all of the things that we're looking for. I know that this is so difficult. And coming into this, I thought I had all of the answers, and now I'm here, and I've been here for about a year and a half, and I realize that there's just so much learning to do. And I thank you guys all for supporting me and my advocacy and supporting Covenant and I as a team. I couldn't have done this without you guys. I'm so thankful. And I just know that there are great things ahead. And to comment on the successors, we have two student reps who we've chosen, a junior and a senior, and they are absolutely wonderful, and I feel so confident that they're going to do a great job. And thank you to everyone who helped Covenant and I in the interviewing and screening process for that. We really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sullivan.
John? Anything from you? I've said my piece on, on her and Covenant, but yeah, just high bar. High bar you've set, the first-ever school board reps. And I wanted to make a comment to Covenant, but he's not here. He was the coolest person in WASDA. He had an entourage. He, the guy just exudes cool, and you're brilliant, and if you need anything at all in the future, you reach out and you've got a family here.
I remember we were all a little worried about him at WASDA because he was by himself for a little bit, because I think you came up a lot later, and yeah, no worries. I just want to add that I, from the moment we interviewed you for the position, you've caught our attention and you've had our ear, and we appreciate everything you've done. You've definitely set the bar high. Thank you for choosing the next team that's coming in. We actually will have a junior and senior from every high school next year. So not just two reps, we'll have 12. And then two that will, yeah, sit here. Not all 12 will be up here. But thank you for putting that together and, and really putting your love and generosity and support into us. Appreciate you, and thank you.
Okay, I'm going to tell my favorite Sullivan story. And I think I've told it before, but I'm going to tell it again because I like it so much. But we were at the Heritage Edition ribbon cutting, and Sullivan was leading the band, and I had no idea who she was, other than she was leading the band. And I leaned over to Jackie, and I said, oh my goodness, I go, look at that girl, she like is in charge. And Jackie's like, that's her new board rep. And I said, that makes perfect sense. You've been amazing, and you helped us shape what this will look like for the future, and it's, you did an amazing job, and I really enjoyed watching you and Covenant work together over the last year. You made quite a team. Thank you.
Real quick, sorry, I forgot. You did announce, or told me when we first started tonight, that you changed your major. What's your new major?
I have graduated, and I'm committed to go to Clark College as a music major, and I plan to go into elementary music education.
You all know this. I'm very proud of you. I've enjoyed working with you and Covenant. You've laid a great foundation for the students coming forward. I didn't cry at your graduation. I'm not going to cry now, but we're very proud of you. So thank you.
You've done an awesome job, and I'll call you Taylor just to make John feel better. But it sounds like you have a recommendation coming if you ever do apply as a superintendent. Yeah, good job.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, yeah. So the next is comments by the school board. Shall we begin? Why don't we start with, why don't we just come down the road this way?
Oh goodness. This time of year, I think, is a lot of our favorites, or if not all of our favorites with graduations. As someone mentioned, we had seven of them that we do in three days, so it is a lot of work. But it is one of the most gratifying experiences to be able to hand these young adults their diploma and congratulate them as they walk off the stage to their new life and their future. That's kind of, I always say it fills our bucket and gets us through, you know, the next school year. It's amazing. This year, I was blessed with a senior of my own, so that was an experience in itself to be able to hand my son his diploma as he walked across the stage. And everybody asked if I cried, and I said, no, I did not have time to cry because there was someone coming right after him to get their diploma. But I think once the dust all settles after this last weekend, it's going to be hard, and he's on his way to CWU, so that's going to be even harder. But I've watched a lot of the board members have their students go through, so thank you guys for your guidance and showing me the way to do it with our kids. This next week, this is our last full week of school, we get to go out and see the schools and do the last day of school activities and all of that stuff. So I'm really excited. These are first day, last day, those are always amazing days for us and be able to stand and wave at the buses as they go by or they leave for the summer. So I'm looking forward to it.
All right. Ginny kind of summed up what graduation means.
All right, Ginny kind of summed up what graduation means to all of us, but I want to just say that I want to thank, Craig brought it up in the Good News Report, I want to thank the community relations crew for broadcasting all the graduations. It is, it's top notch professional. I watch back some of them, because there were some moments that I wanted to re-watch, and they are amazing. Shane and his team and all the security folks that make it safe for everyone to attend, to our band instructors for being there with the students. And, because my favorite part is pomp and circumstance, that very first note and the cheer of the crowd, there is nothing that will ever, ever replace that moment, as many graduations that I attend. But really, it's a first-class production. It's kind of amazing to think about, like, our school district puts on these amazing graduation ceremonies, and there's a lot of people involved. And so I just want to extend a thank you out to everyone for it. Which kind of leads me to my comments. The end of the school year, it's a great time to reflect back on really the year passed and all the time, really. But we have a lot of great things that are happening in our school district. We've touched on a lot of it tonight. John mentioned the student interviews at Union. We've got our artwork, our kids graduating, top music programs, athletics, fantastic programs for students in this district. And Craig highlights some of the great things that happen every time we have a board meeting. We cannot lose sight of the amazing things that are happening in this district. It's why we're all here doing this work. It's why we'll continue to do this work. And I think sometimes we get caught up in just sometimes, things that aren't always perfect, or maybe they aren't as what they seem. But I can tell you, we have really dedicated individuals who work here, who try to make the best experience possible for our kids each and every day, and we cannot lose sight of that. And with that, I'm going to say to John, you came at a time where we needed you most. And as evidenced by all of your folks that came, some all the way from Quincy, that's a long drive, thank you for visiting us. And the folks that we saw on Zoom that wanted to extend their congratulations to you on your retirement. You had to put us through some amazing, difficult times to make sure that our district was still in a great position, that we can continue to do all of the things for students in the years to come. I don't think people understand the incredible challenge that you were faced with when you got here. And again, because it's not always how maybe it seems, and maybe just how it seems in their lens at that time. But you and your leadership were incredible. I know that you will be sorely missed by many people in this district. And I enjoyed working with you. You're one of the best superintendents in the state. I know that when we were working to hire you, and then through your interim process, and then when we placed you as our permanent superintendent, every person I talked to in the state of Washington, through all of my connections through Wazda and all of the other districts, have nothing but fantastic things to say about you and your leadership. And we were blessed to have you be our leader at Evergreen. So I want to thank you very much, and I wish you well in your retirement. We will miss you.
I'm going to start out with, we did get two new board reps, student board reps. I know, I got to get closer, sorry. We did get two new student board reps, Navida Pivi, I think, and Giovanni Rosas Rojas. And I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. We are very excited to welcome you to work with us for the upcoming school year. I do want to also thank all the staff who worked all seven graduations. Countless hours go into making that a moment for families and students that they'll remember forever. I know. And usually I cry at like, all the graduations, and I did really good this year. But they're just such an amazing moment for those kids. And John? So I started a month after John. And you were welcoming and you were helpful. It's like drinking from a fire hose, this job, which I know that it's like that for teachers and all the staff and all the administrators. But you helped get me through those first few months, which were really hard, and I really appreciated that. I want to thank Annie for loaning you to us. And we appreciate her for, just in general, she's just wonderful. We thank you. And you came and you made a lot of hard choices for us, which were, it's not a popular job, it's a thankless job, but we thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to take ownership of doing something I was told not to do. Annie and I kind of conspired for the public comments, and I asked her to help, and I think she called Quincy Superintendent, and that's all it took. Is that, is that the case? Or did you know about it some other way? Yep, yep. So it worked out. And I couldn't imagine the last board meeting you attend not having voices that honor your contribution, both to us and to all of the students and schools that you've served throughout your 32-year career? 32, 33? Well, apparently not me. During the pandemic, we had those Wazda Thursday meetings, those lunchtime meetings. And at one of those meetings, I think it was Tricia Lubach, who arranged for Quincy's district to present about empathy interviewing and the attention that you paid in Quincy to the students of highest need and the results that you were getting. So when I learned you were coming here, I knew we were getting somebody who cared about kids. Knew we were getting somebody who cared about results for students. And it was a relief and an honor to meet you at the time. The work that you did in your first year here to improve the professionalism and the congeniality between all of us and all of us, all of those who work in the ASC, thank you for that. Thank you for introducing the district to empathy interviewing and for the other innovations that you brought to us and championed. Thank you for jumping in on the levee. You were empathetic, you still are. You were enthusiastic, I think you still are, perhaps about other things, and always optimistic. And I'm going to, you know, that's, that's a good example for me. So I'm, that's what I'm going to carry forward. And I know I won't be here for your last day, because I have a family obligation out of state. But there is, there is a gift coming from my artist and for you. And I think I know exactly what should go in it now. Thank you. That's really, I could, I could go on for more time than I probably should, so I'll stop with that. But thank you for your service. Yeah. And your support.
I first want to mention about graduation, that was fun doing. That was my first time, just seeing the enjoyment on the students' faces and just the culmination of 12 years, 13 years of hard work. Yeah, it's probably the funnest part of our jobs, I think. Also, I appreciate all the comments tonight and got a few things to mention. First, if, I know we, Jackie, you had mentioned May's first board meeting about cellphone usage, about possibly bringing that up on a future board meeting. And I know if we're to do anything before the end of August, it would probably have to be on our next board meeting agenda, so I would ask that that might be considered. And we heard tonight, but also in reading that book from Carrie McCary, The Anxious Generation, I'm not through it, but it's very eye-opening and, yeah, appreciate that.
Can I interject a little bit, Gary? And I appreciate that. I know that several of our schools have engaged in grassroots cellphone policies. And it's my belief that when schools take this on themselves and staffs commit to that, that it is a powerful thing. So I think they're doing the right thing by bringing a petition forward to their, to their principal, to work collaboratively to that, to that end. I also want to tell you a little story. So my daughter, I'll brag a little bit, was solidatorian in her class. And when she was a senior in high school, we were having the cellphone policy discussion at Highline High School, where I was an executive director. And I said to my friend, I said, she's in chemistry class, this is the best teacher I've ever worked with, and I'm going to text her and she's going to get, and they have a no cellphone policy, I'm going to text her and see how long it takes to get back. I'll give her two minutes. 30 seconds later, she's like, Dad, what do you need? I'm in test. So while we, you know, it's, it's part, and I, I think the district can definitely consider a district-wide cellphone policy, but I would caution you to jump right into it without doing some processing with your principals and your community and your families to make sure that everybody's on board with it before you move forward. And encourage those schools like Evergreen High School to push forward in their own processes to do a grassroots movement. That's when the power of everybody collectively committing to it, because you have to have your teachers committing to it, your families committing to it, and your students committing to it. When you get all those things, you have a fighting chance to be able to manage it somewhat.
Yeah, the best-laid plans, even implementing it just in K through five and then rolling forward, and we'll see what happens. But yeah, I want to thank all the commenters tonight and all the people, for John from Quincy, and want to thank John for his service. And I know I haven't necessarily been the easiest board member to jump on board. Hopefully, that's not a part of the reason you're leaving, but, but I think, you know, you walked into a really tough situation. I'm not privy to all the details before that, but, you know, going forward, I think if we can just, with the interim and the future permanent superintendent, just let them know ahead of time, hey, this, this is going to be a tough situation. There's a lot of work that's, it's going to be difficult. But thank you for what you accomplished. And also, you know, cellphone usage, you know, the Freedom Ensemble, I think that is a beautiful item. And I know if the other board members want to just take a look at it closer and, you know, just something to consider. And also the concerns from the community, we, transparency going forward, we're doing our best, I think, currently, but there's always room for improvement. So thank you. And thank you, John.
So I should, I should also add that yesterday, was it? Yeah, yesterday, a community letter went out, sharing with the community our status, and I think all of you have seen it, with respect to the interim superintendent appointment. That after this meeting, we'll be going into a closed session to select candidates for interview. And that's set up in the superintendent's office, so that's where we'll be going. I think that's, any other comments? Sullivan want to apply?
I don't have too much more to say other than another thank you. And thank you to Superintendent Boyd for helping me through this. We kind of got here around the same time, and I'm really thankful that we've had such great leadership. And I definitely consider you a role model, and I'm very thankful for you and all of you. You all have really been instrumental in my high school process. And although this position really isn't for me at all, this is just an advocacy role that I've taken on, I really don't consider this something that I'm looking to, you know, put on a resume or something. This is for everybody else. I still have learned so much, and I'm so thankful for all of it. So just another big thank you.
Future school board director? You should put it on your resume. That's my advice. So should Covenant. Okay. This concludes the board comments section. It is 7:56. At 8:10, the board will be going into an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. And we'll return after, can we call, how much time did Kathleen? Okay. After 90 minutes, we'll return to handle the next agenda item, which is to recommend candidates who advance for, to an interview. So we're in recess until then. Taking motions to recommend candidates who we will advance to an interview with the Board of Directors for the interim superintendent position. We'll do this by candidate letter, because of the confidentiality of the search. And each one needs a motion of their own.
I motion that we advance candidate A for an interview.
I motion, second.
Moved and seconded.
Ginny, I think.
For candidate A to be interviewed. Because of the confidential nature, there isn't a discussion. We've already had that discussion in the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Candidate A is advanced.
I motion that we advance candidate E for an interview.
Second.
Jackie and Ginny again, to advance candidate E for an interview. Got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Candidate E is advanced. That's A and E.
I motion that we advance candidate F for an interview.
That'd be Jackie and Julie for candidate F. Ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Candidate F is advanced.
I motion that we advance candidate G for an interview.
Seconded.
Jackie and Gary for candidate G. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Candidate G is advanced for an interview. The interviews will take place on the 20th and the 24th of June. The meetings will open in, as public meetings, but we'll go directly into executive session. And there won't be any other business on the 20th, but there could be some business on the 24th. We do? Okay. Okay, so there is an agenda item. Is it a consent agenda item or, okay. We'll have a consent agenda item, and then we'll go into executive session, but there won't be anything after that on the 20th. Any other comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned.